Okay, hi everybody. I'm Jennifer Dixon and I work in air quality division here at Eagle. Thanks a lot for joining us tonight for this informational session and public hearing for Michigan paving and materials. Really appreciate you taking the time out of your evening to join us. We've got a few people on, so that's really awesome. And we do have one caller in just so that you know, as we walk through the presentation, we will attempt to the best of our ability to describe what you're seeing on the screen. Just in case we have some folks just in kind of listen only mode here. So there's a few things that we want to go over tonight before we really get into kind of the meat of the presentation. And one of those things is that attendees are going to be muted during the meeting tonight and we are recording this meeting. So we will have an opportunity for question and answer, and I'll talk about that in just a second. But we will be recording this meeting and we will post it on Eagles YouTube channel. So that will be available for folks if you have to step off a little earlier, whatever you want to come back and kind of see what's going on or what happened in the rest of the meeting, or you want to go back and review it. I'll also share that link with anybody who attended the meeting today, once we get that posted. So the way things are going to work tonight is we're going to do like a kind of a short presentation. And I'll talk to you a little bit more about that in just a minute, kind of what we're going to be talking about. And then we're going to open it up to question and answer. So at that time, you'll be able to type questions into the question and answer box or raise your hand and ask us any questions that you might have. And then, once we get to seven o'clock or whenever we're done answering questions, whichever comes first, we're going to go into the formal hearing. So just to kind of set the stage on the differences between those two things is during the question and answer, we'll be able to respond back to your questions. We can kind of have a dialogue. But when the formal hearing portion starts, that is to take comments on the record. So we won't be able to respond to any questions that you have during that time. And I'll remind you of this, once we get to that portion of the night, just to make sure that things are clear. Cause I know that can sometimes be confusing. So as we're talking through the presentation today, or once we get to the question and answer, if you want to, you can go ahead and just type your question in the question and answer box. You'll see that typically on the bottom of your screen, that Q and A. You can also click the hand icon at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand or do your raise hand icon. And if you're calling in and you would like to ask a question, you can type pound two on your phone and I'll go over this again, once we get to that question and answer portion as well. Okay, so this is just a brief agenda of what we're going to be talking about tonight. But the first thing that I want to do is introduce the decision maker on this permit. And her name is Annette Switzer. And when you have a chance, if you want to turn your video on there, there now I see you perfect. And I know, and I just wanted to formally welcome everybody to the meeting tonight. So Annette, whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Thanks Jen. And I wanted to thank everyone for joining us tonight. As Jen said, I am Annette Switzer, the Division Director of Eagles Air Quality Division. I hope talking about the proposed permit will give some insight into the permitting process, potential requirements, and allow some time to answer questions about the process before we open up for the official hearing. Public participation is a vital part of our work and the input we get through this process is extremely valuable. Whether you're here to listen or you're planning to make a comment during the hearing portion of the night, comments provided are helpful in ensuring every aspect of the proposed permit action is thoughtfully and thoroughly reviewed. All comments will be taken under consideration when I make a decision about how we will move forward with this action. I know taking the time to be with us tonight takes time away from other things you may have been doing and we appreciate you being here. We will be communicating the decision with you once it is made. Thank you again for listening in today. I will pass it back to gents. We can move through the rest of our evening.
Yeah, thank you so much, Annette. So Annette will be joining us again. She'll be listening in this whole time, but she'll be joining us again for the public hearing portion of the night. So if the rest of my staff can go ahead and turn your cameras on really quick, we are going to be introducing folks. So just to remember, remind you, sorry, I have to remember to use the proper words to just unmute yourself when I call your name and say hello or whatever. So folks that have their screens set up a certain way will be able to see you. So the first person that you're going to hear from tonight is Lauren McGirl, and she's actually the permit engineer who worked on this permit and she's going to be doing most of the presentation today. So Lauren, did you want to say hi to everyone?
Hi, thank you guys for attending.
And then I also have, oh, sorry about that. I also have April Lozaro, and she is actually the air inspector for this facility. And she's going to be talking with you guys tonight as well, April.
Welcome. I'm April. I see some familiar names on our list today. So good to see you all here and I hope that we can help answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, April. And then we also have Mike Deppa. He is a toxicologist in the air quality division. Mike, do you want to say hello to everybody?
Hello, everybody.
Thank you, Mike. And then Jim Haywood is also on the panel tonight. Jim, you want to say hi to folks?
Hello, everybody. Welcome and thanks for coming.
So Jim is an air modeler. So his job is to look at what the company is asking to do and then kind of see where emissions might be. So we have a little bit of some different roles here tonight, folks that are on the panel to come chat with you. I also want to introduce Matt Tomlinson. He's my co-host tonight. So he's going to be working in the background a little bit and we don't want to forget about Matt because he is important to everything going smoothly tonight as well. Okay, so without further ado, just a little bit on, and if Lauren, if you want to leave your camera on and the rest of you guys, if you want to turn yours off for a minute until we get to the Q and A, that's fine. So what we're going to start with is that kind of informational session. Again, Lauren's going to do a little bit of a presentation. April's going to join her for part of that. And then we're getting it, going to get into that question and answer portion where we'll be able to have some interaction with anyone in the audience who has questions about the project. We'll move right into that public hearing. Like I said, either at seven o'clock or whenever we're done with Q and A, whatever comes first. We'll take those official comments on the record and then we'll talk a little bit more about how to submit an official comment. Because one of the main things about tonight is you do not have to make a comment tonight if you don't want to. We have plenty of time after this meeting is over tonight for folks to think about what they heard, ask us some more questions and then make a comment later on. So that's all completely fine. So I want to just go over some other ways that you could make a comment that aren't necessarily at the hearing. We'll talk a little bit about where you can find other information and then how to contact us if you have any questions about other things related to this action or any other air quality. Things like that. So at this point, Lauren, I am going to pass it over to you. If you want to go ahead and share your screen and then you can take it away whenever you're ready. Except for we need you off mute. I know you would think after these, all these years, we would be old hats at that, but I'm telling you, it still happens. So we apologize. Now we can hear you, Lauren. You're fine. Go right ahead.
When I started talking, I saw that you're on mute. So thank you, Jen. As Jen mentioned, I'm Lauren McGirl and then the lead permit engineer who worked with the team of air quality staff here at Eagle to review the Michigan paving and materials or Michigan paving's air permit application. Before we get into the details of the project, I would like to briefly talk about the, what the air quality division does and how the permitting process works. Air pollution comes from many different sources, including power plants, fuel burning vehicles and various industrial sources. The overall mission of the AQD is to protect public health and the environment. We provide this protection by using our authority under state and federal laws through the regulation of industrial sources. The AQD do many different things. For example, we monitor levels of air pollutants. We look at different toxics to make sure the public health is protected. We conduct inspections of regulated facilities such as the hot mix asphalt or HMA plant we are talking about tonight. And we review applications and write permits for sources of air pollutants to ensure the operations comply with the rules and regulations in place to protect public health. The air quality division has the authority to permit sources of air pollutants. However, I want to point out a few items the draft permit does not cover in that we do not have the authority to regulate. These include zoning, noise and traffic on public roadways. If you have any questions or concern about these issues, you'll want to talk to your local government. Additionally, the AQD does not determine whether a facility is needed. When reviewing an air permit application, we evaluate the project to ensure that the applicable air quality rules and regulations are met. I'd like to give a simple overview of the air permitting process. First, the company decides that they want to install, modify or construct a source of air emissions like what Michigan paving has proposed to do. Then the company submits a permit application. The application is reviewed by an engineer like myself. We review the information from the company to decide if the request can meet the state and federal air quality regulations. During the review, other AQD staff are involved to help with different parts of the review. This includes the review of toxic air contaminants or TACs and how the emissions may impact the surrounding community. If these rules and regulations are met, the engineer drafts a permit which is agreed upon by the AQD district inspector and the company. If public comment is required, as in this case, the draft permit is posted for public comment. Public comment is a very important part of the permitting process, which is why we're talking with you tonight. Once the comment period ends, we evaluate all of the comments. The comments can lead to changes in the permit and the final decision. Finally, a decision is made on the permit application. This decision could be to approve the permit as written, approve the permit with changes, or to deny the permit. This decision is based on whether the company's proposed project can meet the air quality regulations. Next, let's discuss how a HMA plant works. Generally, all asphalt plants have the same process. Asphalt is made of recycled asphalt pavement or wrap, other aggregates and liquid asphalt cement or AC. The use of wrap reduces emissions for some pollutants like volatile organic compounds or VOCs and reduces the amount of material going to landfills. These materials are transferred to a drum dryer primarily through conveyors and front end loaders. The finished product is transferred to a silo. Then the HMA trucks which haul it away. There are also potential emissions from the fuel burning of the process. Fuel is burned in a drum to dry the aggregates and it's used in the AC heater to keep the AC tanks warm. Other sources of air emissions come from material handling, storage, truck loading and unloading and truck traffic. These types of emissions are called fugitive because they do not go through a stack. Captured emissions from the drum dryer, top of the silos, truck loading areas are sent to a filtering system which controls some pollutants before it's released through the stack. Based on the proposed permit, the pollutants may be reduced and controlled with the baghouse. They will be, sorry, or a fabric filter. Which is shown here. It's filled with hundreds of fabric tubes like socks. They filter out small particles. Here is a knockout box or gravity collector which removes large particles. Here is a counterflow drum. This is the part that they are requesting to change since the two, since 2000, the AQD has only allowed this type of drum to be installed in Michigan. And at either new or rebuilt plants, which what Michigan paving is planning, is proposing to do. Loadout control is required in the proposed permit. Loadout controls the emissions when the asphalt is emptied into the trucks additionally filters at the top of the silos which store finished paving materials will also be required. The air permit application Michigan paving submitted is proposing to make modifications to their existing plant. The proposed modifications include replacement of the existing drum with a counterflow drum and burner and installation of a blue smoke recovery system at the top of the silos and truck loadout. Now that we have reviewed the overall HMA process and what Michigan paving is proposing, let's discuss what occurs during the permit review. The AQD looks at several different things, including the levels of emission to figure out how the project and the facility should be reviewed. Based on the level of emissions and the type of equipment, we determine which type of review is needed, including which rules and regulations the proposed project is subject to. Throughout the review process and during development of the proposed draft permit, the AQD has ensured that applicable state and federal rules have been met. One example of this is compute, is through a computer simulation referred to as modeling, which was done for NOx, SO2 and particulate matter less than 10 microns, PM10 and particulate matter less than 2.5 microns or PM 2.5 to demonstrate that no violations to the national standards are expected. The AQD also reviewed the toxic air contaminants or TAC emissions from the HMA plant and compared those emissions to the state of Michigan health-based screening levels. The state of Michigan health-based screening levels are designed to protect against health issues like developing cancers or breathing problems. Our review of the proposed emissions determined that they would not violate the health-based screening levels. I wanted to show a graph. Here's the graph showing the current allowable limits in blue. So these are the current permit allowable limits. And here you can see the gray limits from the new drum. As you can see, the permit limits before and after the project are not changing with this project. So for those on the phone, it's just a graph of showing the same emissions before and after the project in tons per year for PM, PM10, PM 2.5, SO2, CO, NOx and VOCs. The proposed conditions contain requirements to make sure Michigan paving would not exceed the proposed emissions that were reviewed by myself and the rest of the permitting team. These include proper use, monitoring and maintenance of equipment, restriction on fuel and materials processed, emission limits for specific pollutants, stack testing, burner tuning, a plan to minimize dusk from fugitive sources. Remember, these are the emissions that are not captured and sent to a stack, preventative maintenance program and an emission abatement program. Now I'm going to pass it to April, who is the district inspector for this facility.
Thank you very much, Lauren. Hi, everyone. I'm again April Lozaro and I am the district inspector for the facility. And Lauren has just walked us through a really detailed bits of information, letting us know what the project entails and how the permit has been crafted to regulate, to demonstrate compliance with the state and federal regulations. But you might be wondering, okay, so if we issue this permit, how does the air quality division actually determine compliance with a permit after it's been issued? And that's where I come in. So these types of facilities are inspected regularly within my and any AQD inspectors' compliance program. So you might want to know exactly what that means and what would an inspection look like. And what I like to do, and I explain to folks is I literally take the, the permit with me on an inspection and I use it as a guide. And you might wonder if the air quality division calls to let the company know that we're coming for inspection. And the answer to that is typically no, we don't call ahead. What we do do is knock on the door and introduce ourselves and let them know during a day of operations that we are there to conduct an inspection. And the reason that we do that is we want to really get a good feel for what's going on at a facility on a routine day that we can really determine compliance on an as-is basis. And so when I go to the facility and I use my copy of the permit as a guide, that's because I want to ensure that I'm looking at each of the different permit conditions and having a discussion with the facilities about them and using those to determine compliance with each individually. And I think that's really important to point out that, you know, we do take a look at each condition and discuss with the company as needed. And so the things that we look at when we're there really is encompassed by the items that are included in the permit like the changes that the facility is proposing to make in this permit modification. Throughout our work as an inspector, we also do respond to complaints. And in the past, there have been some odor complaints related to this facility that a number of inspectors over the years have done evaluations on. And we work very closely with the complainants to try and determine if there's a pattern in odors so that we can be there when those might occur and really communicate with them. After we do an investigation in a neighborhood to see if odors have exceeded a value that is determined acceptable but based on our odor rules, then I usually will call the company or send an email to let them know that an complaint has been received. One of the things that's important to note about that is that we'd like to do an inspection to determine if odors have exceeded our thresholds prior to letting the company know so that that way complainants are sure to know that, you know, the company hasn't necessarily been alerted to, to a problem before we can get there to do our investigation. So I just wanted to point that out as well. You know, finally, following either a compliance inspection or odor investigation report is written and for compliance inspection, any report that is written, those are actually posted online for anyone who would like to take a look at that, can read that and see how compliance was determined or see if there were any issues identified. And I think that's probably a good summary of what an inspector does. And Jennifer, I'll turn it back to you.
Yeah, thanks to both of you, both of you on this. I know we don't normally dig as deep into what an inspection looks like during this, but I think it's really helpful to know how, what might happen afterwards. And I know this is already an existing facility. So I think that that's a really helpful thing and just kind of talking about the fact that the inspection reports are posted online, just like the permit conditions. So if folks online are looking for that, April is a great resource for that. Lauren is a great resource for that. I'm a great resource for that. So we can definitely help, help folks kind of walk through that. So I'm going to take back the reins here from Lauren. So Lauren, sit back a minute here and I'm going to take these reins back from you. We're going to go right into our question and answer portion. So if my other panelists want to go ahead and turn their cameras on, that would be lovely. I don't see any questions coming in right now, but I know we just finished up and we don't do as many public meetings and hearings for air quality on the west side of the state. So it's something different maybe that folks are participating in. So even if you just have feedback on how things went tonight with this kind of conversation, you know, we'll, we'll also take those. But there's definitely, we'll give you guys a little bit of time here to type any questions in that you want to. Or like I said, you can also use that raise hand icon to raise your hand and ask your question verbally. We're completely fine with that as well. And then we do have one person on the phone. So if you are just listening in, you can go ahead and press pound two on your phone if you wanted to ask a question. Two. So we'll give you just a minute here to see if anyone has any questions for the panelists before we move into our actual public hearing. All right, hold on one second, James, and I will unmute you. Okay, you should be able to unmute yourself and then go ahead and ask your question.
Hey, thank you very much. First, I'd just like to say thank you for all the work you guys have been doing and we really appreciate it. And it's nice to know that we have an organization that is working as an advocate for our neighborhoods and for our health. As someone who lives close by, I've been regularly affected by the fumes from this facility. And of course, the smell is annoying and it's sort of affected our outdoor behaviors. But you know, I'm more concerned about long-term exposure to these types of fumes. So I guess a few general questions is what, what can you tell us about the types of fumes that these are? As one question and then sort of a follow-up, do we know that these changes that we're proposing will not in any way enable any sort of expansion or increase in production as fumes might be mitigated or dealt with in a different way?
Yeah, no, that's totally fine. We'll, we will allow two questions. No problem at all. So the first thing that I'm probably going to do is have, Mike, if you can talk a little bit about asphalt fumes in general and kind of how we look at them from kind of our toxics, through our toxics lens. Cause I know we do sometimes look at these a little bit differently than we would at like, say a paint company or something like that. And then Lauren, I don't know if you could just be prepared to talk a little bit about any sort of material throughput or operational restrictions that are in the draft permit conditions. But Mike, I'm going to pass it over to you first.
Okay, thanks Jen. So the toxic air contaminants that are emitted by facility are been studied by EPA. There's air sampling that was done in the past. So we, I think we have a pretty good handle on what is coming out of hot mix asphalt plants. And those emissions are in two forms. There's the, the burning to heat the hot mix asphalt and then the, the asphaltine cement. So there's, in general, there's polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, which are kind of part of VOCs or they're a little bit heavier. Those can cause cancer and those are, were evaluated. And the, the combined impact of all the PAHs were less than our health-based screening level. And that screening level is protective for 70 years of continuous exposure. And that some of the other compounds that are emitted are like some metals from the burning. Those are all below health-based screening levels. And other VOCs that are more volatile, the lighter compounds. And though, of course, everything is meets our health-based screening levels. So they're not expected to cause health effects.
No, thanks for talking about that, Mike. I know we've spoken about asphalt plants in general before. And it's definitely one of the kind of more studied industries as far as like the testing that you're talking about and things like that. So I appreciate you kind of walking us through all of that. Lauren, do you want to talk a little bit about some of those like material or operational restrictions that the facility might have?
Yeah, Jen, I can talk about that. So the facility currently, in their current permit right now, they have an annual restriction of how many tons per year of hot mix asphalt that they can use. And they also have an hourly restriction as well, tons per hour, which is based on the size of the drum and they are not asking to change either of those. So that is one of the reasons why their permit limits for their emissions are not changing because their material throughput and they're on an annual basis as well as an hourly basis are already capped as well as they will be the same in the proposed permit as well.
So James, hopefully that helped. I just wanted to see if you had a follow-up or anything, if you want a clarification on anything and go. You should be able to unmute yourself still if you want to.
No, I think that was helpful. That was my main concern is if we were changing something like reducing levels of output from the smoke stacks or something, if increase in production could occur. But yeah, that explained it well. So thank you.
No, thank you for the questions. We appreciate it. All right. We'll see if we have any other questions come in. I'll just give you guys a minute or so to see if there's any other questions. I don't want to move to the hearing portion too quickly because if you remember, that's the part where we don't get to kind of have a dialogue with you. And you know, just as a caveat, you know, as we move through the night tonight, one of the last things that we'll do is give you guys contact information for all the panelists here. So if you don't have questions tonight, you decide not to make a comment tonight, that's completely fine. We will be available by email, by phone. If you come up with anything in the next little bit here before the comment period ends or even afterwards. I mean, April, I know you've been, you know, very available to folks that have questions about this facility or you know, other facilities in the area. So certainly don't want this to feel like your only opportunity to talk with us because we're, we're very available and we try to, we actually like talking to people. So it's kind of nice. When we get to have these. All right. See James, I knew if I talked long enough, you'd have another question. You should still be able to unmute yourself whenever you're ready.
Okay, at the risk of being annoying.
You're not being annoying. Don't even worry about it.
So I, I know what we've experienced is sort of a non-continuous disruption from these smells. Like it's not a consistent thing. So one thing that's hard is, you know, like if we call, it's hard to get someone over there before the smell might dissipate and then reoccur at another time. I'm just curious, have you guys ever done any sort of continuous air quality monitoring on like surrounding properties for this type of thing? Or is there, are there any options for that type of, I don't know, device or something like that?
Yeah, actually, so not specifically for this facility. We don't have anything unless April, you want to correct me if I'm wrong on that one. And I'll let you chime in here in a minute. And then we do have one of And I'll let you chime in here in a minute. And then we do have one of our air monitoring folks that we can pull in to um, ask. To answer that question too, just about how we kind of look at outdoor air quality in general in the Grand Rapids area. Um, so April, do you, do you want to add anything onto that? I don't think we've had any like specific. Long-term continuous monitoring on or around this facility specifically, have we?
No, um, we haven't. And you know, to answer to your point, James, you know, we, we do have, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes probably. By the time we get a call, um, and by the time uh, we can get to into the area. Um, Jennifer, would it be okay if I talked a little bit about um, our, our complaint investigation? Or should I take that offline with James at another?
No, I think that's a really good point because I, you know, there's likely other folks who could benefit from that as well. If you want to talk about, you know, if you guys. If you do file a complaint or you're having odor issues, April would be the one who would typically respond to those. So yeah, go ahead and talk about that for a minute if you want to. That's perfectly fine.
Okay, thanks. So um, you, you know how our, our complaint investigations works is a couple ways. Um, when we get calls from folks to let us know that they're experiencing odors. And if we do have a, a kind of a routine um, odor um, complaint type of facility. Um, typically an inspector will make um, just drive through and investigations um, on off times. When we don't get calls to really get a feel for what's going on in the neighborhood. But you know, our odor uh, investigation process has a, a few ways that we determine that. And we use the terms frequency, intensity and duration when we're investigating an odor complaint. And so the frequency part comes in where um, where, how often do we get a complaint from folks? Are we getting once a year? Are we getting once a week, once every day? Um, the uh, intensity part of it is where we determine. How strong the odor is on any given time when we're doing an investigation. And then the duration is the last component in the triad. And that is where we have to determine how long um, someone may be impacted by the odors in any one sequence. And so, you know, we often find that if, if we've got a very short-term duration scenario. Where we're having trouble getting there at the same time where someone's experiencing that, that's when we do those extra drive-by. Evaluations to try and see if we can experience those odors um, kind of prior to getting a call, if you will. So we have done that in this case. Um, there have not been odor violations cited in recent years. Um, but that doesn't mean that we have discontinued following up on complaints and, and doing investigations when we get a call. So James, I know that my um, contact information will be up soon and well, we've got some more info coming for you here. Um, on monitoring, but please feel free to, to write it down and get ahold of me. Um, if you have any issues or if you have follow-up questions, I'm happy to help.
Thank you.
Oops, sorry, James. I didn't mean to speak over you. And I do have Susan Kilmer. She is our air monitoring supervisor. So I'm gonna have her kind of chime in a little bit on the air monitoring that we do. So that's kind of the outdoor air stuff. So Susan, you should be unmuted as soon as you are ready. Go ahead.
Great. Um, so we conduct air monitoring around the state at a lot of different locations. Most of our monitoring is conducted in order to measure several pollutants. Uh, that we refer to as the criteria pollutants. And that would be things like uh, particulate matter, ozone, carbon monoxide. Nitrogen dioxide, sulfur dioxide and lead. And we conduct the monitoring to make sure that areas and cities and regions are meeting those requirements. So um. The uh, sorry. The air monitoring is not done outside of facilities because it's really more to measure regional. Um, or area-wide uh, concentrations, if that makes sense.
James, did you have a follow-up on that or was that helpful?
No, that was helpful. Thank you.
We're putting you on the spot. We might make you one of the panelists because we're making you answer so many questions. Oh, Susan, thank you for chiming in on that one. I do appreciate it.
Sure thing. And we do have a lot of air monitoring information on our website. So just wanted to.
Yes, no, that's true. And James, so if you are interested in that, April can also get that to you as well. So there, we do have some kind of fun, interactive things when it comes to air monitoring and. It, you know, it, it's interesting what Susan was talking about and we were actually putting up a new monitor. Um, in the Grand Rapids area, but not here. It's more south of town. So um. That hopefully will give us some more information too. So we just really, we, it's always interesting to kind of see how those come out. So. All right. As you guys can tell, I'm wasting time. So I want to make sure that we get all our questions answered if we want to here.
And our Grand Rapids monitor that we currently have is located um, not too far away. Actually, it's uh, Leonard and one thirty-one. Um, so just as an FYI, if you ever want to look at that instantaneous data that the monitor shows on our website. It's interesting and, and really isn't too far from the neighborhood.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out, April.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. All right. So Lauren sent me a note too to remind me that um, if you probably did, because you came to the meeting tonight. Hopefully you got some of the information that we sent out about this proposed project, including the proposed project summary. Which we'll talk about a little bit later, but that's kind of that condensed version of what the company is asking for. And we do have links in there to some of the information that we're talking about tonight as well. So if that's helpful, not everybody. Um, wants to read through things and kind of figure that out. So again, you know, just pop us an email or something and we're happy to do that. So I think what we're gonna do is um, unless you have. Any opposition to that and that, I think we are going to go ahead and shift over to the hearing portion of the night. Wait for her to come on here too. Does that sound good to you? Or can you give me a thumbs up? Okay. All right. Well, panelists, thank you very much for participating tonight. You guys can go ahead and turn your cameras off. All right. So like we had talked before, just, I know sometimes I reiterate myself a lot on these. But I just want to make sure that there's a clear understanding of this portion of the night basically takes out of, takes out of things. The um, ability for us to respond to any questions or anything like that that you may have. So this is just solely for folks to give us comment on the record. Um, it does include a sort of dry opening statement, but just to kind of officially open that um, hearing. So I'm gonna go ahead and get that started. And once we. Get that going, I will. Unmute everybody so you can speak. So I'll go over in the opening statement how you can make a comment, but it's a little bit easier just to kind of articulate it. So this, we're gonna do the same thing. You can raise your hand and then speak your comment aloud. Um, you can also type your comment into the question and answer box and I will read it aloud unless you tell me, don't read it out loud. And that it will still become part of the permanent record and will still be an official comment, but you can do that either way. So. All right, I'm just gonna go ahead and um, open the hearing. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this public hearing. My name is Jennifer Dixon. I am with the Air Quality Division of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy or Eagle, and I'll be the hearing officer tonight. We have a Nut Switzer, Air Quality Division Director, and she is the decision maker for this permit application. She's gonna be on listening to your comments this evening and she'll be considering all comments prior to making the decision. This hearing is for a proposed permit to install or air permit for Michigan paving and materials located at three, five, six, six. Mill Creek Avenue, Northeast and Comstock Park, Michigan. In this proposed permits, Michigan Paving and Materials is proposing to modify an existing hot mix asphalt plant. Excuse me. Their quality division is responsible for regulating sources of air pollutants to minimize adverse impacts on public health and the environment. The law governing those responsibilities is Part fifty-five of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. Before the company can make the requested changes, they must obtain a permit that meets the requirements of Michigan's air quality laws. This means the equipment must be capable of meeting state and federal emission standards, including health-based standards. The proposed permit must also contain conditions that include emission limits and specific ways of operating the equipment to ensure these standards are met. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in the proposed changes an opportunity to provide information the department may use. And deciding whether to approve the permit to install or if there are additional issues to consider. Please note the proposed permit to install is still a draft permit. This does not mean the department has made a decision. Instead, it reflects an initial technical review of the proposal. We hope having the details of the draft permit available will help you in providing comments. Everything in the draft permit remains open for comment and further consideration by the department, including whether the permit will be granted at all. Please recognize the department can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria the department must use in making a decision. So for example, concerns related to local zoning, truck traffic and noise are not within the department's authority. Some of you may want to simply express your support, opposition to the proposed project. We'll be happy to make note of your position, but please understand the department is by law not allowed to base our decision. On whether there is widespread support or opposition to the proposed project. This hearing is being recorded and your comments will be part of the information the department will consider in making its decision on the proposed project. The public comment period for the proposed permit began on January twenty-fourth and will end at midnight on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Additional comments or information may be submitted through that time via written or verbal comment during this hearing, by email or by voicemail. After the close of the comment period, the decision maker will review all written and verbal comments received. All significant air quality-related comments will also be considered, at which point a final decision on the permit application will be made by the decision maker. The decision maker may deny the permit, approve as drafted or approve of amendments. If approved, the decision must specify which provisions of the draft permit, if any, have been changed in the final permit and the reasons for the change. And all three scenarios, all interested parties, including everyone who was on the original mailing list, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period. And anyone who attended the public hearing will be directly notified of the decision. Included in the mailing will be a letter from the decision maker regarding the decision and if applicable, the approved permit. As stated previously, you may submit a comment and a written comment at any time during the comment period by US post or email. Or you may call in a comment to the public comment voicemail. You may also type the word comment in the question box and submit your comment that way. I will read aloud all comments you submit via the question box unless you state do not read. If you would like to make a verbal comment, you may raise your hand and I'll unmute your line so you can speak. We will limit your comment time to about three minutes. If you're speaking, I will let you know when you have about thirty seconds left and I'll do my best to address commenters in the order your hands were raised. But please bear with me as the technology does have some challenges for doing that. I don't think we have to worry about it tonight. Um, please recognize department staff are here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your views on the proposed project and to listen to those comments. So thank you so much for your attention and I will now begin calling the names of anyone who would like to make a comment. And I apologize for my dogs. If you can hear them, they're having wrestling match right now. So I apologize for that. Um, but just as a reminder, if you want to make a comment, you can go ahead and raise your hand and we'll unmute you and you can speak your comment verbally. Or you can type that comment into the Q and A box. So I'll give you about a minute or so, um, in case folks are thinking about whether or not they want to make a comment. And uh, then I'll call the names of anybody who would like to. All right, James, it looks like you would like to make a comment. So you should be able to unmute yourself now. And just please state your name for the record if you don't mind before you start making your comment.
My name is James Barber. Um, I guess I, I have a question first. Um, are these comments uh, in, intended to? Be um, well, let me start over. I, is this an okay time to ask another question about the permit request? Or no? No? Okay.
You can ask it, but we won't be able to respond to it. So we would have to respond to you after the hearing was over. I know that doesn't make sense, but that's kind of how it works.
Okay, I'll just ask it. Um, this is something that wasn't totally clear to me. I just realized I haven't explicitly heard the motivation behind this permit request. And I assume there can be many motivating factors for modifying a facility. For example, decreasing escaping odors would be one motivating factor. Uh, increasing production efficiency would be a totally different uh, motivating factor. And so uh, I was just curious if in this request, there was a specific explanation for, for what this um. Modification was intending to achieve. So I'll take an answer after the hearing. Thank you.
It sounds good. Thank you. All right, we'll give you guys just a little, another minute here and see if anyone else would like to make a comment before we close the hearing. Okay, and that seen no other comments. Are you okay if I close the hearing?
Yes, you can go ahead and close the hearing.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to just read the closing statement and then we'll get on to a couple other things before we end the meeting tonight. So thank you so much for taking the time to participate in this meeting tonight. We appreciate your interest in protecting Michigan's air quality. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, the public comment period will close at midnight on March thirteenth. I'm sorry, did I say that wrong? I might have said that one wrong. March thirteenth, yes, apologize. March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. All interested parties, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period and anyone who attended the public hearing will be directly notified of the final decision on this proposed permit. The hearing is now closed. Thank you again. All right. So thank you guys very much for listening in tonight. Just have a couple other things to go through before we. Officially end the meeting. So um, if you didn't make a comment tonight, like I said, there's still plenty of time to do that. You can submit your comment um, through the mail if you'd like to. And that's to permit section manager at Eagle Air Quality Division and it's P O box three, zero, two, six, zero. Lansing, Michigan, four, eight, nine, zero, nine. Um, another really easy way to do it is to send us an email. And we have a specific email box that we prefer people send public comments into and that is eagle, E G L E dash A Q D. Dash P T I, public comments and P T I public comments is all one word and it's at Michigan dot gov. And then another really easy way to do that is to um, give us a call on our voicemail at five, one, seven, two, eight, four, zero, nine, zero, zero. Um, so just trying to give people a little bit of a variety of ways that they can get ahold of us for this. Um, I had mentioned place to find other information and that main website is Michigan dot gov. And then it's slash Eagle Air Public Notice and Eagle Air Public Notice is all one word. And you're gonna find information there like that proposed project summary that I talked about, which is kind of the condensed version of the project. And James, we will get to answering your question, but it's kind of contained in there a little bit. Um, so maybe a good place, if you haven't looked, take, had a chance to look at that, it might be a good um, resource for you to. The technical fact sheet really walks through a lot more of the technical details about the permit review. Talks about the rules and regulations that apply very specifically and why they apply and things like that. So if you're into that, that's a great resource as well. Um, you can also find the proposed permit terms and conditions that, the information that Lauren and April talked about. When they were doing part of the presentation and then we will post the link to the meeting recording as well. So like I mentioned, I will also send that to everybody who was here. Uh, so on the screen right now is just our, you know, how to contact us with questions. So this is all the folks that you heard from tonight. So if there's a specific person that you are interested. So if there's a specific person that you are interested in getting ahold of for some other reason, then you can feel free to jot their number down because we do have one call in person, Lauren, I'm going to just read your email address and phone number out just so that folks have it for sure. So that is Lauren McGirl and her email address is McGirl L and it's M as in Mary, A as in apple, G as in game. I guess I'm not sure what G is normally. I as in igloo, R as in red, L as in Larry, L as in Larry. So two Ls and that's at michigan.gov. And her phone number is 517-582-5345. So if you happen to be calling in and you jotted that number down, if Lauren's not the person that you need to chat with, then she can always help you get to the right person. So that is no problem at all. All right. So that's kind of the end of everything today. But Lauren, I did, I know I'm putting you on the spot on this one because we don't normally do this, but would you mind kind of responding to James's question about a little bit of the impetus of this? If you know, I mean, we're not the company. So it really kind of goes back to Lauren's slide where the company decides they want to do something, they give us the application. But we do know because it's, you know, new equipment that they want to install and updates, you know, their process to put in a more efficient equipment. So I didn't know if you had anything else that you wanted to add to that to kind of address James's question.
Yeah, I can do that. Um, so right now I believe it's a parallel flow drum dryer that they currently have. And they're asking to update it to a counterflow drum, which parallel counterflow refers to the way the aggregate and wrath is added into the drum and how the fuel goes. So there's have been studies around these as well. And counterflow drums typically have less VOC emissions from them. However, I will use the caveat with the emission factors that we have provided to us from the EPA are based on fuel type and not the type of drum. And that's why you're not seeing emissions decreases or increases reflected on this. Again, their annual fuel use is remaining the same. So those are hourly. So it's just the type of drum in this case that would be changing and it's newer technology that's out there. So that is one of the reasons why they're requesting this change newer technology in the emissions are known that they can be lost. However, we just don't have the correct information to show that in the emission limits.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you said information because when we talk about emission factors, that's like our, that's definitely our language, right? So basically what Lauren's talking about is, you know, when you have a process like this, we're basically saying like, how many pounds per ton of material that's going through the plant? How many pounds of a pollutant is emitted per ton of material going through the plant? So if you think about that, like think about the rocks, think about the asphalt, think about the things mixing up in there and heating up, it's how many pounds per ton of that stuff is coming out of the pollutants. So when we talked about those different pollutants. And so April reminded me a really good point on this one, as well as the, the permit, if it's approved, it does have what we call stack testing, which is basically going to be emissions testing at the stack for some of those. April, if you want to unmute or if Lauren, if you know off the top of your head, what pollutants they would be testing for. If this permit is approved, if you want to mention those two, I think that's important information.
They, I don't have the permit in front of me, so I don't have them memorized. But they have to do stack testing specifically within so many days of permit issuance, I believe it is, or there is typically a specific timeline. And then they also have conditions in there saying that we could request stack testing for the other pollutants that we're not requiring.
Yeah. And this is just, it's another way for us to double check compliance. So all the stuff that April does, all the records that she reviews, the walkthrough, the, you know, looking at the equipment and making sure things are operating properly, that it's installed the way it's supposed to be, all of that stuff. This is like another check and balance that we have another tool in our toolbox, I guess, so to speak, to basically say like, okay, this is what you said. Now you're going to do the test and now you have to prove that you're actually in compliance with these emission limits. So hopefully that's helpful. It's a little bit, you know, I think we got a little bit off track, but I also think that's really important to talk about. So James, I want to make sure that you didn't hang up, obviously, and maybe he did already. He was like, I had enough of this. No, I think he's still there just to see if there, if you had any follow-up on any of that stuff. Oh yeah, that's interesting question. So he just chimed in. Is, will it change the way the trucks are filled? I don't, I want to say no, but I'm not positive about that. Interesting question. April, I don't know if you know.
I, I don't believe the physical configuration is changing. However, Lauren did mention that that's part of the upgraded odor control system that's being installed. So that is changing to, I would call like the technology that's typically used now as opposed to the older technology that the plant is currently using.
Was that helpful, James? I think there you should be able to still talk.
Yes, that was very helpful.
Okay, good. Yeah, no problem. Any other follow-ups? Otherwise I'll let you guys go for the, for tonight. Okay, sounds good. Well, again, thanks everybody for participating. Thanks again to the panelists. Thanks Annette for being the decision maker on this project. So we will let you guys all have the rest of your evening back. And again, I mean, we really do greatly appreciate the time that folks take to attend these meetings. Like Annette said in the beginning, we know there's other things that you would likely rather be doing. So hopefully this was helpful. And again, you know, we'll, we definitely take feedback on these meetings if it was helpful or not helpful and why we'll, we'll take that constructive criticism as well. So thanks so much, everybody, and have a great rest of your evening.